And we did meet with you in October. What I've sort of heard informally is a lot of those comments were not incorporated into the final document. And I think, kind of before we go forward, I think the question is, you know, is that the plan? Or why has not that happened? Or was there a misunderstanding on something on our part? Or can you take us back to the October meeting and where we left off?
And Noah, do you want to walk us through this? Thought Noah and Maggie had taken your comments and updated Part Four. And maybe what would be best if we could talk through what you feel hasn't been included in the final part draft of Step Four?
It was also Parts One, Two, and Three that had lots of changes that none of them happened.
Noah, can you speak to that?
Uh, Parts, Steps One through Three, I cannot. Uh, Step Four, I can. I don't recall making changes to Steps One and Two. I believe Maggie worked extensively on Step Three. And then I worked on Step Four. Um, I mean, I'm still happy to go through Steps One through Four, and we can see what the issues are.
Are you saying nothing from Step One through Three was incorporated?
I only found, I only found two changes that were made.
Okay.
There were major issues with One, Two, and Three. For example, on the list of companies in the borough, you said the largest employer is something, it was Bolton Metal Industries. They haven't been around for over 10 years, and we told you that in October, and it's still listed there.
And I know that Maggie updated the list. What I'm concerned is, Noah, that they were distributed with the wrong draft of Step One through Three.
Okay. I can pull up, uh, which step would that be in? I suppose it's all one document, so. All right, I can pull that up here and see if it's in our version.
Page 10.
Okay, I think the, uh, I think I see what the issue here is. We do have Teresa in our version, the Bolton Metal Products. Uh, Maggie's source was the Ezra Business Analyst, and it cites 2019 as the year, so.
Yeah, I'd asked her to use MC. You know, um, council members, we'll, um, get with Maggie tomorrow. I apologize.
Yeah, I just spent three hours trying to go over to see if what was there was, and like I said, I only found two changes in Three. And everything else that we had discussed was still the same as it was in the original.
I apologize. Um, I'll get with Maggie tomorrow and see where her draft copy of the Step Three is, because it's not in the client folder, Noah.
Not to my knowledge. I don't know. I can't imagine she created a separate document.
Sometimes our associates will work on a document and keep it on their desktop versus putting it into the client file. And then when it's formatted and sent to the client, um, the updated document isn't there, but I'll get with Maggie tomorrow. Again, I, my apologies. I wish I had known ahead of time that Step Four, I think I saw that you had questions on Step Four, but I didn't know Steps One through Three hadn't been provided.
Is there any issues regarding Step Four? I think I might be able to more fully address those.
I need to go back through my document. Randy, you had some, didn't you?
Well, I had the, uh, the Bolton. And then my concern was the businesses, I think there was a couple I wasn't familiar with, but Bolton was the biggest. And I was concerned about how that kind of maybe messed up the, the numbers as we went back, you know, through the remainder of the report, uh, when it comes to the dollars and things like that. So I think with, you know, if Bolton was taken out, then that's going to change things on that, on that Chapters One and Two, I believe, is where that's at. I'm trying to find the full report in my files, and I haven't picked it up yet.
Before we move on to Four, was there anybody else who had any things with One, Two, or Three that, Deb?
Oh, yes, I believe on page 20, there's a, um, a graph that shows, uh, an estimated income from property taxes, and you're using the property value to calculate the property taxes when it should be the assessed value.
Right.
Because I think you have $180,000 down as the average property value, and then you're using the millage to calculate property taxes, and that's way off. And then that number is actually carried down, I think, to the next chart, where it shows the average, uh, I think you have a, an average household income or per capita income of $28,000, and then using that incorrect number from your first chart, it, it's indicating that Belfort residents are paying 10% of their income for taxes, and everybody else on the chart is below five, and that just without getting into the numbers, looking at a graph where you've got one community allegedly paying 10% of their income on taxes, and nobody else even being in the neighborhood, would be a red flag that there's something wrong with the information.
And, um, which table is that? You, uh, you mentioned page number.
Uh, it's on page 20. I don't have it right in front of me, but it's the initial graph that shows the estimated income from property taxes, and you're using the property value rather than the assessed value to make your calculations.
No, I don't think those page, I don't think those page numbers match up with the.
I was able to find it.
The page number does not match up.
No.
At least not, not at what I'm looking at.
That's.
So.
Well, how about, how about the table number, Deb? Do you have a table number?
I don't know. I think it's Table Eight.
Except that the table numbers changed between October and this last report, so this has been slightly updated, so they may or may not.
I think it's one of the first charts in the, in the packet.
Um, I'm looking at the most current version Dawn sent out about two weeks ago.
On the 29th.
Yeah.
And I, I couldn't find it on page 20.
No, it's not there. That's why, Ian.
See a table on page, uh, 19, Table 19. There was revenue by category, which mentions earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, and LST tax.
But that's, that, that's from their records. Um, Noah, she's talking about Maggie ran a an analysis to um, show what the borough's residents are paying in real estate tax versus the surrounding communities. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Table Eight on page 11?
I see it.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is online as well.
Okay, and she did take that from the median home value versus assessed valuation.
Yeah, which really are very two, two very different numbers.
Yeah, no, I will say this. I mean, um, we use the home values for the other townships as well. What we'll do on that, um, Table Eight? And we'll have to get that information, though, from the county, because we don't have the assessed valuations, the average or the median and assessed valuation for those other communities. Um, but in order to compare apples to apples, we're going to need that. So we'll, we'll look at that.
On, on this revision on page 36, under Keystone Development Planning and Zoning, uh, you talk about codes enforcements being included in our budget. That is only true for the nuisance enforcement portion of codes enforcement. Because as you noted elsewhere in the document, we're not charged for, uh, codes enforcement. And so I think that this paragraph needs to be rewritten so that it talks about only nuisance enforcement, planning, zoning, and the DBI MOU, so that we, so that it's clear that we're not talking about the, the general codes enforcement section, which.
There, again, Joey, and at page 36, on this.
This is the one that came out down the 29th.
Page 36?
Yes.
What's the table number?
Page 39, online, for page 39.
Okay.
Mine says 30. Okay, but anyway, there's that. Let me see there. I think there was something else in this one. Let me look.
For my reference, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the which expenses, nuisance expenses?
The nuisance code enforcement is included in our budget. The regular codes enforcement is not, and the way that paragraph reads, it looks like all of them are. It just needs, that paragraph needs to be written to make it clear as to what you're talking about.
And that's on page 35, Noah, under nuisance code enforcement.
Oh, okay.
Just highlight that in yellow so that you can edit the narrative to make sure it matches with the table.
Then on page 41, um, in the last time I pointed out, a lot of the profit under streetlights that occurred in, uh, 2019 was, was a result of us, uh, transferring from the mercury or whatever the, the light, lighting system was to LEDs. And I think that that needs to be, I had said in that suggestion that it needed to be incorporated, because we, and then we subsequently reduced the millage rate because we realized that because of this change, we actually had a, uh, significant decrease in our electric, electricity cost. And so, uh, and this, that is, we do have a permanent reduction in expenses, not a temporary reduction.
Because of the LED?
Yes.
Okay. I just put that in as a comment, Noah.
Okay.
And in 2020, we implemented a park rental fee for Governor's Park, similar to Tally Rand. This is on page 42, and you only mentioned, uh, Tally Rand Park down at the bottom under Parks, at this very last line. So it should be both Tally Rand and Governors.
Okay.
And on page 43, the last paragraph, I had asked if expenditures for parks improvement are included in the report, but the grants associated with these improvements are not, then how are we getting an accurate picture of the parks and rec program? Isn't there some way to statistically control for expenditures as well as revenue? And I, so somehow that paragraph needs to be clarified.
We can add a note to that, because I think this is going down through your revenue.
Okay.
Um, so we'll make a note as far as the, um, grants.
Also, uh, under, on Table 61, on page 47, uh, the number you have, uh, for the chief stipend expense that was budgeted for 2020 is correct. However, we switched the, uh, fire chief on July 1st, and the new fire chief is taking a stipend. So, uh, so now, so it ended up, we paid out $750 for last year, and we're going to $1,500 a year going forward. So it's exactly the same as what it was in 2015. So that's going to change your projections elsewhere down the line.
Okay.
Still scrolling.
Okay.
It's not easy to get around it.
Okay, on page 63, under Budget Outlook for, uh, 2020, uh, there's a sentence that says, while the budgets are consistently balanced, the budgets themselves vary year to year. Shouldn't you say actual expenditures?
Let me see what she has written here. Well, your revenues are, are changed from year to year, too.
Mm-hmm. So the expense.
The budgets themselves vary year to year.
I did just update that as well, Teresa, to actual expenditures, in case that changes.
I'll clean up that language a bit.
Okay, um, page 65, uh, under revenues. It says the projections assume minimal increases in other, in other revenue. And my question is, if you are assuming minimal increases, why in the Table 94 are the bottom lines expected to go down over the next five years? And that needs to be explained in the narrative, because it doesn't seem to match up to the text. Because if you see that says, the, the, yeah. So if you look in 2020, it's 3.6, and then 2025, it's saying 3.57, and that's going down over time. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Imagine, um, uh, it says, since it says, the projections assume minimal increases in other revenue, it's perhaps, there might be a missing line here. Some revenue might be minimally increasing, while other revenues may be decreasing, and there may just be some missing language there.
Okay, but right now, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, because she has, um, everything staying consistent, other than the Act 511, the earned income tax, where she's probably increasing that a certain percentage per year, which those numbers should increase. They are a little bit. Well, make a note there, um, Noah, for us to review that, and because her other financing sources go from $559,000 per year, drops down to $417, but we need to explain why that decrease in 2021. So we'll add some additional explanation into this.
Okay. Under, on page 67, this is a comment I made the last time, under Franchise Revenue.
Okay.
And it says that you think that this revenue is going to remain constant, and I said, I thought this would, might be incorrect. The contract negotiations we had a year and a half ago, we estimated that as more people move over to satellite internet service, the number of subscribers to cable TV will go down, and thus this fee will go down. However, the renegotiated contract increased the franchise fee for each subscription. So there might, that might counterbalance it, and the only person I know that we asked you to check with was Cindy Han or Amy Farkas at CNET, uh, for future revenue for the, to make sure that this is a good estimate.
And I, okay. Okay.
On page 68, on Table 97, you've got us, uh, slightly increasing the cost for, uh, the real estate tax collector, just FYI, we passed a motion two weeks ago to increase payment to the, to her for two, from $2 per bill to $2.50 per bill. And by the way, it's the first increase since 1984.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay.
Sorry, you're a train in the background.
We have them here all the time.
Perfect, it's like I'm in Belfort.
Does anyone else have anything for One, Two, and Three before we go to Four? I'll give somebody else a chance to make their comments on Four then, before I give mine. Whoever wants to go first, May. Anyone?
There's just two minor ones, uh, on, in Section Four, I believe that can, um, that's where the police department, uh, comes in.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, um, I don't know, maybe the pages have changed, but it's just really minor. Uh, when we're talking about, uh, non-sworn officers, animal enforcement, parking enforcement, it says we have one, now we have two. That's all, the only difference there, and that's on page, at least the one I have, on page 61, under, uh, the description of Belfort Police Department Overview.
Okay.
Second paragraph, last line, second paragraph, right under, uh, the, on Overview, says, uh, Civil Administrative Assistant and a non-sworn animal enforcement parking officer. We have two part-time, uh, animal enforcement parking officers now.
Okay.
And there's one other page that has it on, and that's page 63, first paragraph, uh, the end of the second line under Staffing. Says Administrative Assistance and a non-sworn animal enforcement parking enforcement officer. Just make that two part-time, uh, enforcement officers.
Okay.
Okay, that's just, that's, um, I have a lot of questions, but that's between me and the chief and the council.
Okay.
But, uh, those are the only, it's the only changes I saw there that.
Well, I already took care of them for you.
Very good. Thank you.
I have one, ma'am. Um, be under the same section, page 61. The, uh, third paragraph from the bottom, it starts a review of public records.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that should be one litigation case against a, uh, district attorney.
Okay. Okay.
So change County Commissioner to District Attorney?
Yes.
Anything else, Sean?
That's it.
Okay. Others? Okay, I don't see anyone. So mine on page 10, the first full paragraph, you said there's no annual performance reviews for the Borough Manager. We actually instituted them last year. We started in October. The first review was just completed for both the, uh, Chief of Police and the Borough Manager. You are correct, however, that we still do not have an annual performance review for the Assistant Borough Manager.
So those began in October of 2020.
Mm-hmm.
And you finalized the performance?
They had their full performance evaluation two weeks ago.
Okay.
Three weeks ago.
So January of 2021?
Yep.
Okay. Very good.
And in the next, uh, sentence, we talk about written weekly reports. We have requested monthly reports from the Borough Manager, and the first one is actually in this evening's packet.
Okay.
Uh, preference on page 11, Commission on Climate Change. I think climate adaptation might be a better word, only because it's less a hot button.
Okay.
You wanted that from climate change to climate adaptation?
Mm-hmm. Uh, on page 15, uh, it says, although a report is given, it is not written. And actually, that's starting this evening with, uh, the, it'll be a monthly report. It's the last box in that Table Four.
Yep.
And similar on Table Five. First performance evaluation was conducted in October to December and completed January 2021, under comments. Pay, and related to that on page 18, Recommendation G5. Uh, you say we need to develop an annual performance review for the Parliament Manager and Assistant Borough Manager. I think that should just be changed to the Assistant Borough Manager, because we already, we're done it for the Borough Manager.
Right, okay.
All right, yeah, question to that.
Yeah.
So it was, I, I thought when we started to put these evaluations together, that it would be Ralph, uh, doing the evaluation for the Assistant Manager, and not, not the Council.
That's kind of what I thought as well.
So I'm wondering if the Assistant Manager needs to be involved in, in this, as far as that title goes. Since we're doing the manager, then each other manager is supposed to do the people that are under them.
Russell? Can you help? Sorry.
Did you have a response to Randy's question?
Are you, I'm sorry, you want me to respond? I'm sorry.
I don't know, you or Teresa, I don't care.
Uh, I, I agree with what Randy said, unless something has changed. My understanding was I would take care of the evaluation for the Assistant Borough Manager and other senior staff that's underneath me. But I, I, so I would clarify the report in that way.
So Noah, G5 should be that the Borough Manager develops an annual, develops and, and performs an annual review, performance review for the Assistant Borough Manager. They've already done, taken care of the manager, so we remove all that reference. And now it'll be just, uh, that Ralph, or the, sorry, the manager develops the performance review for the Assistant Borough Manager. Ralph or the, sorry, the manager develops the performance review for the assistant borough manager for G5.
It, you might, I don't know. What Randy was saying is that Ralph would also be doing the performance reviews for the other senior management staff. So that would be the Public Works and the water sewage treatment plant supervisor.
And those are currently already done, right?
Well, we thought they were. I think there's been some years that we missed, but we, I put in the report just so it's noted.
Okay. Noah, do you have that? It's, it's all the department heads and the assistant borough manager.
For G5 still?
Yes.
Okay. On, going down to page 29, under recommendation PD4.
Joanne, I'm sorry, before we move from this page.
Okay.
On recommendation G8. It says the borough should designate a specific borough employee to disseminate information to the public. To me, that falls to Ralph. Ralph has been doing this for as long as I know. And it's also under part of his duties in the manual that I was looking at.
Okay, so that didn't come out as part of our interviews, that there wasn't an official public spokesperson?
Yeah. He's been designated for several years.
Okay.
The only thing that he doesn't become the spokesperson for is for police-related, and then that's Sean.
Then I think since it's being done, Noah, rather than, because it's not a recommendation because it's being done. We need to go back when we talk about the interviews. And where we've referenced that there wasn't an official spokesperson. We need to note in there that the borough manager serves as the official spokesperson for Borough Council and Sean for the police department. So we'll go back and edit that part of the report versus a recommendation because it's no longer a recommendation because it's already occurring. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that, Noah?
Yep.
Okay.
Formalized manager reports, we're doing that, G9.
We'll take that out as a recommendation. And Noah, what we'll do in that regard is edit the narrative where we say that there wasn't formal reports. When we talk about the borough manager. Because they're being done.
Sounds good.
And then that, in that table, it'll say meets the recommend, or meets the standard.
Okay.
And under G11, and Doug might want to speak to this one as well, where we talk about the financial challenges faced by the borough, which are likely to exacerbate the pandemic. Council should strongly consider expanding ties with its neighbors. Our neighbors have also had issues. And the two items there are the viability of merging the sewer system with Spring and Benner, which we kind of do. I mean, they meet each other. We carry the flow past, once it reaches our system. So I'm not quite sure what type of merging that you're asking for.
Well, I could, I could speak to that because I, you know, being in the industry and that kind of thing. That we have our own sewer system for the borough. Of course, we own the treatment plant, but we take wastewater from the neighboring or surrounding authority. In places in Pennsylvania, authorities like ours and theirs have gone together and become one entity. So I think that's what Delta is saying, that that should be maybe considered. I know from time to time, either council members have suggested it, authority members over at Spring, Benner, Walker Township supervisors have mentioned it. It's been kind of out there for a number of years.
And I believe we have reached out on occasion to try to enhance that, but we haven't made much progress. Is that a fair statement, Ralph?
Yes, I think it's been, you know, there's been times where we get along very well and times not so well. You know, but I think, you know, certainly it's something that should be on the radar.
Yeah, I agree. Are you finished, Randy?
Yeah.
On page, if I'm on the correct document, page 19. At the bottom of the page. Says Ms. Walker, Finance Director, Ms. Watson, Utility Billing. We have a part-time person that shares some of those responsibilities, I think. Is that Alyssa, Ralph, or not?
Well, Melissa, the receptionist, she'll help put in payments and those kinds of things. And I know eventually I wouldn't mind having Alyssa help out with some of the things. But we're not there yet, you know, with COVID and people working from home. We're not really there yet. But Melissa, who's a receptionist, puts payments in and does, you know, they both, both Alyssa and Melissa do some depositing and things like that. So in some cases, yes, there's some shared responsibilities.
Does that warrant the change, Teresa or Joanne, or you want to leave it as it is?
I, I guess, these are the two that we had interviewed because they have the responsibility.
Yeah.
We can most definitely add that support is provided by Alyssa.
Melissa.
Melissa. And what's Melissa's last name? I'm sorry.
Nicola.
Okay.
Yeah. C, C, U, L, L, O, U, G, H.
Okay. And, and is she part-time, full-time?
Part-time.
Okay.
Permanent part-time.
And does she assist with just entering payment information? What are her duties?
Going back to what Doug said, she assists Barbie Watson, the billing administrator.
All right. Okay, we'll add that.
Anything else under the general recommendations? Okay. Don't see any. So on page 25. The table 13. Needs to be updated with that change in the tax collector salary that I mentioned earlier.
So in 2020, she was, she had a, that's when.
Twenty and 21 is still $2. Starting in 2022, it'll go up to $2.50.
Oh, I see. So we're changing the narrative, not the table?
We will be paying, right, it'll be $2.50 starting in 2022. It's $2 for this year, and then next year it goes up to $2.50 per bill.
But the table stays the same, right?
Well, now that they would, that will have to be recalculated for the tax collector's salary. Because she's getting more money for her, the billing.
Right, but I thought you said that didn't go into effect until 2021.
2020, okay. When you get to the next thing for the prospective, I'm just, it's not table 13.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll change that narrative and then we'll, so in the forecast, it needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about table eight. It's under the financial municipal budget process. The second item says the annual budget contains a budget message, which draws attention to positive financial circumstances. I believe, and maybe council can help me with this, is that Ralph's report, his budget report, didn't it sort of include more of a narrative about, you know, positive outcomes of the budget and that kind of process?
Yes.
Yes, it did.
So we have started to do that. We, Ralph had put together a new budget report this year, something different than.
And I did see that. I saw that your budget included narrative this year versus just the table. So nice job on that. So we can go back and amend that to say that the standard has been met. So what we'll do is we'll look at your new budget document and make, and then review this table to make sure, Noah, that whatever they've incorporated with this year's budget is reflected in the table. Did someone else have a question?
I did. It was in the earlier version that I saw, but I don't know if we just left out the, on page 61 and through 65, they talk, he talks about our our mobile video recorders and our mobile data terminals, our records management system. I think he left out unintentionally the body worn cameras that we or that they were just being implemented at the time of the assessment.
So if you, if you have implemented those, Sean, can you get us?
I can send you the policy.
Yep.
Should it be sent to you or to?
You can send it to Noah. Well, you can send it to me and I'll make sure Noah gets it.
To Noah, okay. So I'll write it up, I'll send you the policy, but I'll write up a
Description?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We ready to go on to the next set?
I had a question on recommendation number F2.
Okay.
I think that's being addressed through Ralph's implementation of the, what do I want to call it? He wants to get council together on a, either four hours on a Saturday or a day, a retreat. And I think this kind of covers some of that, where we can throw some of these thoughts into an agenda items for that meeting.
Which won't be done until we get out of the COVID virtual meetings only.
Well, but I think what we can do here is, Noah, note that council and management is in the process of scheduling work sessions to develop a, and the purpose is, is to develop the five-year capital improvement plan?
Yeah, the plan is to have a retreat, not work sessions.
Okay.
A big retreat to create a strategic plan going forward, a general strategy. So it could, it's not just the capital budget, it's a broader view than just that.
But will your strategic plan include a five-year CIP?
I'd like to say yes to that.
So we'll keep this in as a recommendation, if you don't mind. And then we'll make a note that council and staff are scheduling a retreat to begin the implementation of this recommendation. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay. And we probably, in that regard, then we'll go back to the table where we talk about the CIP and add that language in there as well, that it's partially met. Okay, but it's not saying that right now. Okay.
Anything else on the, under the Fs? Under the police department ones on page 29. The PD4, talking about updating the operating procedures manual. We put $5,500 into the 2021 budget to get this started this year.
Okay. And again, we'll note that within this recommendation.
Yep. We've got, we're looking at two different possible consultants for that.
Okay.
Then I have a question on PD 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. It just says these are the recommendations and there's nothing there. So I don't know what's going on. On page 31.
I see that.
So is this just a cut and paste and nothing happened or what?
No, and actually Dane, who had provided the police department section, I think had an additional exhibit, which probably included some of that language. But if not, we'll have Dane write a little paragraph on each one, each of those. And Noah, can you check into that? Because I think you have his full report.
Yeah, I can, I can look into that, see if there's additional information available.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have any others for the police department, anybody else?
I don't have anything else that needs changes. I'm just, you know, I'm kind of eager to get started on some of these standards and, you know, ones that aren't met or partially met. Trying to find the easy ones to take care of first and then just continue to move on. And I'm talking with Sean, he's, I think, in the same mindset with his policies with the police department. And to me, that's, I think that's their baby at this point because they know what their needs are more than we do. But on the, on the borough side, I think that's what I'd like to see happen here. Or sooner rather than later, to move this forward.
Well, we just had that discussion today. And a couple of weeks ago, I talked with Sean about setting up a meeting with Sean, myself, and Sergeant Brower to. to go through the police section and the report and do exactly what you said, Randy. Work on some of the things that we can do immediately and then add some priorities, make, make a list of what we can do now and what we need to prioritize to do first on the, some of the items that are a little more harder, harder to implement just because of costs.
We still have, is there anybody out there that make other recommendations to any of the other, changes to any of the other recommendations? We still have document five and we don't have time to do that this evening because we have to start the council meeting in six minutes.
We're good. Okay.
Is, is document five part of four or is it a standalone?
It's, it's a standalone.
Because I can't see, I'm not able to find that one. So if you resend that, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
FYI, I will tell you my big gripe with type five right now. And there are, is where you set the goals and tables. You've got goal one, two, three, four, and five. Goal one says Belfont goals. This is the forecasting document, Randy. This is the goals for the next five years for Belfont. Goals two, three, four, and five are for Lansdale. For Lansdale, not Belfont.
Noah?
Noah.
That really bugged me.
I bet it did.
That is a, that's completely fair. It bugs me too now.
I'm gonna need a bigger boat.
No wonder we didn't get it, Randy.
Yeah, they're probably wondering what Belfont's doing on there.
What pages that, Joanne?
Just the whole document.
Wait, which document?
Mine does not say that.
No, mine doesn't either.
Mine doesn't say that.
Mine says step five dot doc X and it's got Lansdale. And when each of the comprehensive financial management five-year plan, one, goal one is Belfont, goal two, three, four, and five say Lansdowne.
I do see it, Teresa.
I don't have that.
I do see it. So it's sort of in like the header.
Yes.
Through five.
How about if you send us all a, a new copy of this? Because my pages aren't adding up. Just send the whole thing, including five, please.
I still don't see that.
That would be great because my pages haven't lined up in any of this.
And neither have mine.
Teresa, let me give you the page numbers.
I don't know. You can kind of see it.
Page four for goal two.
Sort of like at the top of the box?
Yes.
Oh, so you use Lansdowne's template for tables?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I changed everything else. I guess that must have slipped through.
All right. On page four, I'm seeing that.
Yeah, so he used the table format. But these are your recommendations.
Yeah, I just use like a table format that was already made instead of completely restructuring this rather complicated table.
We're down to about two minutes before the meeting. So I, I agree that if we can get this resent, corrected, reset, updated, whatever it is you, you guys need to do and then resend it, that would be
Yeah.
probably the best thing.
Is it possible to send us a PDF?
Yes.
I think that would, thank you. That would help with the page numbers.
I agree.
Would be helpful. I agree.
I know council has to adjourn to go to their meeting. I'd just like to ask, when we think there's these edits and all of the, when this new report, since council's asking for everything, though, Teresa, could you give us a timeframe when that'll be accomplished and finalized? If you want to respond to that and email the next day, that would be great.
Yeah. Let me get with Noah, but honestly, I'd like to get the changes done sooner versus later. Back to you by the early part of next week.
And then. Appreciate council's inviting us, be this evening to take part of this. This is always good for our purposes and, in watching what's occurring between the consultant and the municipality. Obviously, we have a stake in this as well. So I appreciate council's time. I know you have your meeting. I think the questions were valid. Some of the concerns pointed out. Obviously, when the report was issued, there were some, some changes to policy that took, took place. Those should be noted in the report as we go forward, but I'm hoping we can get something finalized here and start moving forward on some of the recommendations as this seems to be dragging out for a little while now. And again, COVID, doing things remotely lends to that. But again, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one minute before the council meeting. So everyone wants to do a quick run to somewhere? Go ahead.
Take that opportunity.
I'll be right back.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, and well.
Thank you.
And I will work on this, this week to get this turned around. My apologies for step one through three. I just have no words, but I appreciate your patience and we'll get this turned around for you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Hey Gina, John is here. He isn't out shoveling snow.
I know. I was getting ready to make a joke when, when he got back. I was gonna ask him if he's ready with his shovel because it's coming.
And your bucket.
And his bucket. Needs a bucket.
I, I.
There you are.
I ran down here, logged on, you know, started up the computer and it said, you know, I'm not refreshing. What's the thing where it says downloading?
Updating.
Updating, updating at thirty percent.
Oh, my God.
Screen said restarting. And it was like, oh, I'm good. Then it came back and it says, I'm at thirty percent. So. That's why I was like.
You better get ready with your shovel, John.
Welcome to Microsoft.
Are we ready?
Can you see?
Yes, we can. Are you ready? Okay, see now you can start the tape again. Good evening, everyone. The February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Belfont Borough Council meeting is called to order. We'll first have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence followed by the roll call.
My pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which it stands. Nation. And justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Eaton.
Here.
Ms. Umboski.
Grace.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Prendergast.
Here.
Ms. Tasty Vacy.
I'm here.
Ms. Walker.
I'm here.
Mr. Brackville. Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Mayor Wilson.
President.
First item is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Rand, Clayton and Brackville. Does anyone have any changes? I have one. On page two, second sentence in the second paragraph on page two. There's a sentence that says Brackville moved to approve the event after going through parks and rec, recommendation. It should be changed to Brackville moved to approve the date of the event with final approval to be made after going through parks and rec committee for recommendation.
Okay.
Any other changes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion, Eaton.
And who's seconding? Prendergast. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Oral, oral comments? Anyone here in the public want to say anything before?
I know we have a couple of people who joined that may speak about some of the written correspondence that came in.
So just hold off until they get to their case?
Probably is.
Okay. Seeing nothing, that's not on the agenda, move to written communications?
Sure. The first letter is some information that we received from the center county solid waste authority or refuse recycling center in regard to national landfill tipping fees. And they showed various states, including Pennsylvania. They just noted that we were around the average price per ton for the tipping fees. So it was just more of an information style article that was passed to us. So I wanted to have you, as council members, receive it. The next item is just some information as well regarding a warranty or insurance program through the National League of Cities has a vendor they work with or endorsed. And I know this has come up in the past. What I'd recommend is we can bring it up to the authority and see if there's interest in maybe bringing this vendor in or doing an interview with them.
I think that might be a good idea.
Sure.
Where, where does that come from? Do they solicit us or are we soliciting them?
I attended the, I think Ralph and I both attended workshops from PML. Basically, they, they contracted with this company to provide the services to boroughs throughout the state. And they send out materials to all of our residents. So they would be working with Barbie to find the property owners, to send them things of, if you're interested in sort of, sort of like an insurance program where if you have sewer or water line issues between what the borough owns and your house, and then within your house, there's a second, there's a second kind of contract. And if you should have a problem, instead of paying multi-thousands of dollars, this will help you repair those things, sort of like the electric bill lines insurance that the West Penn Power provides for our electric company.
That's my point. We're gonna be harassed by phone and others.
As I understand it, no. It's just materials.
Get a card in the mail.
Exactly.
How did this come into the borough? How did we get the correspondence?
Our members of PML, you know, came into my attention.
Members of the league.
Yeah, so we, we get, you know, we get their endorsed vendor information. I just wanted you to let you know that I received it or it's made way into the packet. But, you know, we, we'll probably get it from time to time, just like I get other company information. I just keep it on, you know, let you know that it's coming in and you can decide it, or the authority can decide if you want to take any action. Move on?
Yes.
Okay. The next item was just, you know, we did through the airport authority, you have two Belfont appointees. One of those appointees, Charles Zakens, we did receive his resignation from the authority. There's more information about that here coming up, but it's in the packet. The, we do have Gary with us to talk about the historic marker, possibly answer any questions. It's not only a marker, but it's a plaque. There's two items. They're splitting the cost. I believe four ways and the borough is possibly two hundred and fifteen dollars. Again, of eight hundred and sixty in total. And this plaque would go on the Belfont train station as well as the information item or tablet as well as the plaque that has the date. Feel free to ask questions. We do have Gary here for a moment or two, if you would happen to have a question.
Gary, do you want to speak first and then I'll say, and then others can say what they want to say?
Sure. The two items mentioned, one would be the bronze-like plaque that would go on the train station and it would, would talk about the original builder, which in this case would be the Pennsylvania Railroad. And it would give the date of construction. And that would be a smaller bronze-like plaque and be by the front door. The street tablet part of that would be like some of the ones that you've probably seen around town that the street tablet project has erected, most prominently the one in front of the courthouse, but at five or six other locations, then more are planned as money becomes available. I can tell you the status of is, is that the chamber's on board to do its, its quarter and Happy Valley Adventure Bureau will, will do its quarter. It's, we're waiting to hear from the Historic Railroad Society, but I know it's being recommended to their board by President Dan Dorotko. And so it's going with his endorsement and I'm very confident of favorable reply to them. So we're, we're asking the borough to partner with the other three of us to do the final piece of, of the funding to put the street tablet and the plaque on the train station. It's basically a move by the chamber board to make the request. And it's in consideration of the train station, as, as mentioned in my letter, being one of the most prominent historic locations of Belfont and probably the one that's visited by more than anybody else when you consider all the people who go through Talleyrand Park, all the events, all the visitors that come into town, they naturally come to the visitor center and the train station. And this would be a great way to have that information out there and could be enjoyed by all. So very inexpensive if it's split four ways and it would be a nice enhancement to our tourism portfolio in Belfont. And it would help Matt Maris and local historia and then the various other tours that, that operate through Belfont. So we're requesting the borough's patronage by covering the, the final quarter. And if there are any questions, Susan is here with me and we'll be glad to answer them. Thank you very much for your consideration.
I want to do a, a step back slightly in that I would like to actually refer this to the Talleyrand Park Committee before we make a motion. In that I would like to actually refer this to the Talleyrand Park Committee before we make a motion and a decision. Because Talleyrand Park Committee has said multiple times, and they set a policy about two years ago, that they didn't want any more things in the park. And if we've been complying with their request not to put more things in, sticks on the ground would be a thing. However you define it. I want to have, want to know where they're coming from and what they're thinking is for doing this before we go forward. If that, if they're fine with that, then I think we can work with this. But I think because we've got a policy that we haven't allowed the public to put things in the park. I don't think we should be doing something until we get their imprimatur for it.
If for any reason the park location, which would be ideal, falls through, we could certainly put it off the parking lot in the train station. Then it wouldn't be in the park.
Yeah, well, Doug, go ahead.
I totally, I totally disagree, Joanne. I'm all for it. This is something that will benefit the community. We have them around town. It's a great idea. And if the borough can't come up with a 215. Gary, you can count on me. I'll write the check tomorrow for you. So.
If they pass it.
Thank you, Doug. Much appreciated.
I'm gonna, I'd like to split the difference here. I, I would prefer to make a conditional approval tonight. And then if we feel so compelled to get Talleyrand Park's approval, then at least once they okay it and rubber stamp it, we'll already have approved it instead of it having to come back to council.
Then are you making, you need to make a motion?
Well, he didn't, well, Doug didn't make a motion either. I was just commenting. I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor too of just approving it. But if you feel very strongly about getting Talleyrand Park's approval.
I, I do, because I think we need to be consistent, no matter who the person or group or organization is requesting. I think we need to be consistent with everything that we do. And because of that, I think that's where we need. Randy?
Mike was helping. Mike has, he's getting fingers.
I agree with that, with everything that's been said. I just don't think we need to step on any toes. And it's no, it has nothing, it doesn't cost us anything to have the park committee look at it. I'm agreeing with, I agree with Gina about going conditional.
Gary, what's, what's the timeline on this for you?
Well, we do have a timeline. It'll take some, some time for the artwork to be done for it. You know, their pen and ink drawings of historical photographs of it, so that needs to be done. Then we have to contact the company that actually produces it. And it probably wouldn't make sense before we are, the ground will be thawed and everything will be a good shape. So we do have some weeks before we could put the plaque in place. But of course, the, those weeks would start when we actually order the plaque. So there is time. You know, so, yeah, it makes sense to have Talleyrand Park Committee look at it. I hope they'll agree with it. If they don't, then we can put it off the end of the parking lot in the train station. If they feel it would get in the way.
No, I think, I think it's only appropriate that it goes where, where you think it should be in the, in the park and on the wall of the building. Well, will someone take, will someone contact Talleyrand Park Committee tomorrow? And see if we can't get them to?
Come on board with this, because I think any, anytime we get to communicate some.
Yeah.
Randy, are you, Randy, are you saying, hire you to talk this time?
Giving, giving you my hand. So I want to make a motion that we approve this donation of 215 for the tablet donation. On the condition that the Tyran Committee approves moving forward with.
I'll second.
I second that.
I got two of first.
And Thompson.
All victories for short people.
They need it where they can get it.
Yeah.
Now, wait a minute.
I'm assuming per Gary's comments that this would be located near the, the train station and out in the park.
As, as I.
Yeah, it would be near the train station, yes. Maybe off the, the, the main promenade, or maybe closer to the train station, depending on what Tyran Park Committee would, would be comfortable with doing.
And then the second part of it is the plaque on the building itself. So there's two things that are going up. Correct? Correct, Gary? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
That's more of a label for the building. I don't see where that would conflict with the Talleyrand Park Committee.
I don't either, but that, but we just need to bring the father and have them say fine.
Understood.
Yeah.
So am I on the hook for 215 or is the?
No, you're off the hook right now.
Not yet.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
We'll get back to you once we hear from Talleyrand Park Committee. Yes, Tom?
Who will be contacting Andrea?
Don.
Contact them, Tom. All right, thank you.
Tell them I'll be glad to come in and talk to them about it and, or answer any questions that they might have and.
I'll get in touch, I'll get in touch with you, Gary. Maybe we can talk to Andrea together. And I don't know how, if she's going to want to get the committee together or do it via email.
Okay.
Talk to her.
Very good. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this project, Gary.
Ralph, next?
Sure. Next item is also about the Airport Authority. The Chairman, Mr. Groeschel, put my name in for consideration. I have met with Mr. Groeschel a couple of times. I know Doug's our other appointee. I, for what it's worth, I would be interested in serving, certainly up to council. As to what you do with the idea of me serving on that authority. But I want you to know I would be interested.
So you have it down further in the agenda again. So do you want to just wait until then or do you want to do it now?
I think Doug was going to say something.
Yeah, and mutes.
You have to unmute yourself, Doug.
I didn't know if you recognized me. That's, I'm just making sure. Ralph has, has been extremely helpful to the authority since my appointment. We just recently completed a new bylaws for the authority. And I used Ralph, I, I got much advice from Ralph during that process. And at that time, he got to know Chris, the Chair of the, of the authority. So I think Ralph would be very well suited for the position that's open on this authority, and I hope council would support him. And we would like to move forward with his appointment as soon as possible.
Bring it up later if you want to think about it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the Airport Authority.
I'd be glad to second it.
Okay. If, who's seconded?
Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
So it was, who was the first?
Brackville.
Brandon. Okay. Brackville and Prendergast. Discussion?
I think it's a good idea. Ralph's been involved over the years, and he's, he got a nice letter here in the, in the packet, and so I think he'd be a good addition.
Thank you very much.
Not to mention, he doesn't have anything else to do.
That's right.
Well, I'll go that far.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much. Move on.
Thank you, Ralph, for volunteering.
Take off anytime you're ready.
Next item is about geocaching or creating a geocash site in Talleyrand Park. I know there are some actually in Governor's Park. But someone's asking about creating one in Talleyrand Park. And I believe we have Juanita with us. And with that, she also spoke about a, like a walking tour through your cell phone. So I don't know if Juanita wants to say anything before or answering questions. But that's really what their request is, really, two items.
So Juanita, do you want to say something before we have a discussion? You have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Um, sure. I was credited some Adventure Labs. They're basically points of interest on a, on a self-guided tour. And I wanted to set them up in Bellefonte, and I went ahead and put them in the program, but I did not activate it. I wanted approval on that. At the end of that, it's kind of customary to have a geocash that the finder of the Adventure Lab can then sign. It would just be a very small, I, I decided the best container would be a magnetic key holder. And I would place it hopefully on the bridge. I understand that Talleyrand doesn't want any more things in their park. So I understand that it may be an issue with them. But I don't know unless I ask, so I'm just asking for permission for that. And if you, I mean, I don't know if I actually need permission for people to walk along the sidewalk and answer questions on their phone. But since it was in the borough, I thought I would bring that before you also.
Mike, you had your hand.
I've, I've run into geocaches around the place, around various other spots. And they're really very unobtrusive. I don't think the park committee, even though they were there unless we told them.
That's the point. I mean, that's the object. You want them to be, yeah, you don't want them to be obvious.
I think we've got actually two things here.
Yeah.
I think we could easily go ahead with the motion for the allowing to do the virtual walking tour. I don't, I'm not even sure we need that, but just to give the imprimatur, have a motion to do that. The second part, I think, just like with the tablets, it needs to go to Talleyrand Park Committee to be consistent. Even though. So someone wants to make a motion, two motions or one motion, however you want to do it, I don't care.
I'll make a motion that we provisionally approve the geocaching and the walking tour app, or however you want to describe it. In Talleyrand Park.
Plus allow the, or conditionally approve that as well, or just, or go ahead.
I would say that, that one you could approve straight out.
And fully approve, okay. And fully approve the virtual walking tour. Okay. Who's going to second that?
I'll second it.
Clayton. Okay. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so Juanita, Don will set this up with the committee. And then we'll let you know when that meeting, if there's going to be a meeting, will be so that you can present it to them as well.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure's ours.
Ready? Next one?
Yep.
Okay, we got a very nice thank you letter from the 2020 Census Group. Being a community partner, Bellefonte did assist us with the 2020 Census. So we just now received a very nice thank you letter. Next item is just a letter of appreciation in regard to Officer Nighty and Police Department. About her outstanding service with a local small business person in an incident that was taking place. So of course, when we get good letters like this, we want everybody to be aware of it. So it's there. Mayor, the chief wants to say anything.
Chief?
He may.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Couple of letters that came in. I did try to send them out this afternoon. They're not on the agenda. Again, they just, we got them today. The local moose organization, as you know, where it was in at the last meeting and picked a date for the Rubber Duck Race of September 4th. That request came in late in the afternoon, like this one. And we did not realize there was a wedding already scheduled for the park on September 4th. So their new date is they're looking for permission is Sunday, September 12th. We're not aware of any other events or weddings for Sunday, September 12th.
Okay, so we need a motion to move the date for the Rubber Duck Race from September 4th to Sunday, September 12th. They will still need to meet with the Parks and Rec Committee to make recommendations for the finer plans for this event surrounding COVID.
I'll make the motion.
Johnson, Johnson and Brackville. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Also came in today is a letter from the Bellefonte Priests Committee of the Story Bellefonte Incorporated. Very similar letter to years past when it's a non-COVID year. But anyway, looking at Father's Day weekend, June 18th is a Friday. The 19th is a Saturday. They do the Open Car Cruise Friday evening. They do the sock hop. And they would like basically the tee blocked off from, say, 5:00 to about midnight on Friday night. Saturday, it's a full day of activities. The tee blocked off all the way down to basically, I think Potter Street. Howard Street blocked off, use of the municipal lot there by the bank, the bank lot. Trying to think what else is, but very, almost identical to similar requests, including banner requests for both sides of High Street Bridge. And as in the letter is using the, I'm going to say it. I'm just the messenger.
I know.
Yeah, using the waterfront walkway.
Okay, so we need a, I think because of COVID, what we need for this evening is an approval for the dates with referral for, to the Streets Committee for review of all of the other items on their request.
And.
And specifically stating tonight that there will be no banners or advertising on the waterfront area per borough policy. To get that out of the way right now.
Yeah, but Joanne, will streets be doing also, you know, the spacing of the booths and such like that? Depending on what COVID.
Yes.
Where we stand with COVID.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I need that motion.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Eaton and Prendergast. Okay. So the, the motion is June 18th and 19th from 4:30 PM on Friday, June 18th through 7:00 PM on Saturday, June 19th.
Conditionally.
Conditionally, yes. And then, and referral to Streets Committee. Randy?
I'd also like to add that we strike the paragraph about the ordinance, which we do every year.
Right, okay, so.
Good thinking, Randy.
Just read them as I see them. Just read them as I see them.
I can't, I, I never remember for one year to the next.
Randy, you're talking about the dogs or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. The dogs, the skates.
Yeah.
They have to self-police.
We, we cannot strike that, or we are, what are we, what are you saying?
That we will not create an ordinance or resolution to police.
Striking it.
Right, so that means that they have to, for lack of a better word, Sean, police that if they choose to do that. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, the, uh, the dog ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we're there to, uh, assist if they, the event holder, if they're having an issue and they go and, and, uh, ask someone to remove their dog or pet, and they refuse to, uh, then we'll go ahead and take action then.
So Joanne, will they have that in their application that no pets are permitted, I guess, for the applicants that?
That's, that's, yeah, that's whatever they, they want. That's not something we're going to be personally enforcing. We're not going to go through making an ordinance or a resolution to enforce it for them.
Yeah, they, they put it out there to their, to the participants in the crews or the event. And then there, I think they do have signs that, that we had made up a couple of years ago on all the entrances into the event that, uh, state the ordinance.
There is no ordinance.
Or, oh, okay.
There is no ordinance. We don't have an ordinance. We're not enforcing it.
Right.
And we've consistently said that.
Right.
And I, I don't think there's been, I don't think there's been any issues over the past number of years that we've done this.
Occasionally I've talked to some of the entrance in there. We're disappointed that they weren't allowed to bring their dog and some of them brought them, uh, not.
That's, that's up to the committee.
Yeah, I know. I just, maybe we should, and the committee probably already knows, but it should be on the application that no pets permitted, so there are no surprises.
Well, I, I think the dogs that come in just, it comes in from people coming into the event. We're not going to enforce the visitors with the no pets thing, that they have to do themselves. We're not going to enforce it. We don't expect our police to enforce that either.
Because we have It's like that every, it's like that every year.
Yes, we have not had, had an ordinance or
Why do they keep asking about it?
If you don't ask, you don't get, and the worst they, the worst we can do is say no.
Yeah, I think in years past, what they had done was they, whenever the ordinance used to be for the park, the, the, like, say you weren't allowed to have your dogs in a, in a park, they would, that, the, um, like the downtown, they would incorporate that under like that ordinance for that would be a park for that day. And that's what the ordinance that we would enforce at the time.
Yeah, well, we have no dog. That's, that's gone.
Right.
Are gone.
Are gone, well, good pun.
Okay, so do we have any further discussion? So, uh, proving the dates and times for the 18th and 19th. No banners on the waterfront and no, uh, ordinance prohibiting dogs or borough enforcement of their, of their request. All in favor?
Joanne, Joanne, so can they have people walking back and forth, holding a sign along the waterfront? Advertising the cruise.
I don't, I, I don't see how they could, uh, pay somebody to do. But I think if they, if they want to go to that extreme, well, I don't.
We didn't approve it at least the last three years, two years.
Right.
They've asked for it since 2017, and we have said no every single year. So this is no change in policy from our point of view.
Maybe, maybe they'll get the hint.
So also all in favor, so is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
The mayor, the mayor, the mayor.
Something to say?
I just want, on behalf of the, uh, on behalf of the Cruz Committee, I do, I do have to just mention this, and I'm not in, not saying I'm in favor or against it. If there's a policy, there's a policy, but I've been told by the Cruz Committee that they, uh, they have some sponsors who will will donate a significant amount of money if they can put banners up on, uh, in the waterfront. So, uh, all I'm saying is that, um, and I don't know how long they would, they have asked that the banners remain there. But all I'm saying is that, and like I said, I'm not, not disputing whether it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that's the reason they ask because they can re, they can raise a significant amount, money more, which happens to go back into the borough, if we would allow uh, banners on the waterfront or a banner for one sponsor. So that's why they asked it. It all come, follow the money.
But if we did that, we'd start a precedent. We don't.
We would have to do that for everybody.
Yes.
I know. That's always a great excuse.
Well, no, it's not really an excuse. It's a thing.
It's a good reason.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good excuse.
Like I said, I'm, I'm only saying it because I want to answer why they ask.
Has, has Ralph said, Tom, you're just the messenger?
That's right. That's right. Thank you, Julia.
You're welcome.
And I don't want to belabor this, but could they use the Lamb Street Bridge? To hang banners?
We have not had that. I, I, there has been some concerns, uh, about banners on the bridges in general. Is, is a visual issue. Is also some people think they're somewhat tacky. Well, that's can be argued one way or the other. I would rather not start something that we would have to continue. I would like, just limited to what we have right now and, and go on from there.
Plus, it's limited.
That, that's fine. I was just, uh, like Tom said, uh, it's the, the sponsorship and yeah, and I think they, they said in the letter that they would not have the banners on the waterfront up as long. I think it was only going to be a week.
Yeah.
And if, if they could, would, uh, pick an alternate site, maybe we could accommodate them. That's just my thought.
Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? Seeing none? So moved. So, uh, Don Ralph, uh, set this, uh, we need to add this to the Streets Committee, which needs some, if it can fit in on Thursday, fine. If not, we can wait another week.
Okay.
Depending on what the schedule is.
All right. Now, I do have one kind of a verbal, uh, request that should have been maybe, I mean, the person isn't here. I'm just going to bring it up. The Lions Club, uh, would like to hold their rib dinner fundraiser that they normally do at, and in front of the brownstone on the diamond. They traditionally reserve those four or so parking spaces uh, to have people pick up the rib dinners. They would like to reserve that area for Saturday, April 10th.
Can we refer that to the committee? Well, just to make sure that we've got the, uh, things up and then we can come back for that one since they're not here this evening.
Would I, would I go to?
Streets.
Okay, sure. I believe that is all I have under communication. I'm okay, Joanne, with approving the date tonight if, if other council members agree, just the date.
Okay.
If, I'll make a motion to approve the date of, uh, April 10th, 2021. And then Streets Committee would make the recommendations for the committee.
I'll second Brackbell.
Johnson and Brackbell. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
All right.
Okay, uh, does anybody else have any written communications? Seeing none, Tom, your mayor's report.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, I've got a couple of things for us this evening to consider, uh, along with, uh, I'm just going to start off with number one, the, uh, the police report that you received. If you have any questions about that. Um, Sean is available and I've read it and I probably have some knowledge of questions if you have them. Um, it's a pretty extensive report. Uh, I, I like the way it's being done. I think we've already talked about that. Anybody have anything for Sean?
Good job, Sean.
Uh, I would just like to note that there was a complimentary letter sent by a downtown business uh, regarding the actions of, uh, Officer Macy Knightick, uh, that took place, uh, for a complaint and, uh, they said that, um, uh, Officer Knightick had gone above and beyond call of duty in taking care of that and, uh, working with, uh, not only the business owner, but, uh, some, um, customers that had been harassed by somebody. Uh, number two, we, uh, some of you are aware, most of you, I'm guessing at this point, that we had another, um, a recent, uh, on Tuesday, uh, the ninth, we had another pedestrian, uh, struck in the same walkway that we had, uh, the death a couple of months ago. Uh, they were injured, but not severely. Uh, the situation was, you know, it was dark. It was at night. She was wearing dark clothing and, uh, I uh, talked to Ralph and Don a little bit about this and what we'd probably like us to look into is to get some lights. Uh, there's a, there's a triple pole in the middle of the diamond that, uh, holds the, you know, the existing dim lights that we have downtown and we might be able to, uh, put a couple of spots in there to shine on those walkways. Uh, that's, I don't want to discuss it tonight, but I'd like to have that placed into streets and safety to talk about, take a look at it and make some recommendations if possible. The next thing I want to bring up is that, I don't know if any of you've noticed, but, uh, there are quite a few, uh, residents and a few businesses that are out of compliance for our, uh, streets and sidewalks clearing. Uh, borough ordinance, which is, uh, 495, um, Article Three, snow removal. Uh, one of the major offenders, or there's two major offenders in, in my mind. Uh, the first one is the Campana Shoe Store, which is, um, on the corner of Allegheny and Bishop Street. If you've noticed that, that hasn't been touched all winter. It's, um, it's a corner lot, so it affects two streets and it's full of ice and snow. And the other major offender is the, on Bishop Street as well, which is the, the entirety of the front of the Catholic Cemetery, which, uh, holds not only a bus stop, but is a major, uh, route for school students. That hasn't been touched either. Um, as, as we all know, we have the 24 hour after this, the snow ceases to uh, get the walks clear, and most of our residents are very good at that, but on a, just a sort of a quick inspection, I came up with, uh, 15 different locations that are out of compliance. And they're not only out of compliance for one day, they're out of compliance for six days now. And if you read the ordinance, and I'll give you guys all a chance to sort of dig into that this week if you'd like to before the next meeting, but what I'd like to do is the, the places that are out of compliance right now, I'd like to send them a letter to let them know they are out of compliance and that we will be enforcing. And it's a $25 fine uh, for one day, and it increases $25 for each day after that. Uh, I realized there may be some people that are away from their, away from their homes, um, maybe down in Florida for the summer or for the winter, I'm sorry. And, uh, but they need to make arrangements with someone to clean their walks when, when we have snow.
What, can I ask why they haven't gotten a letter already?
Because we don't have a nuisance officer right now.
Ah, that would do it.
Well, that's not, that's really not the case. Uh, that's part of it, but here's, here's the deal. The ordinance reads that the, anybody, any borough, um, any person who's affiliated with the borough, i.e. all the people on the screen, uh, and, um, anybody that works for the borough can come back to a source, and we need to figure out who that source is going to be. I'll take, I can be the source person if you like. Now, we do have our nuisance officer coming on board tomorrow. So he might be the source person too, but if everybody looks at their own ward two days after a snow and someone's out of compliance, let me know or let, um, Mr. Brooks know, who, Harry Brooks, who will be our officer. He can then enact, uh, a ticket and put it on the door or have it mailed. So it's everybody's responsibility, um, to at least report if someone's really negligent. I don't, I don't want to say, whoop, 24, you know, 24 hours is over, I'm calling. Yeah, if they're really negligent, let's, let's get on it because it's really a safety hazard. I noticed people on Bishop Street not being able, because there's, right now, there's, uh, there's nine non-compliance on Bishop Street alone, okay? And people are walking out on the streets on Bishop Street, and we have a safety problem because of this. Um, and I, I have all the, I have all the addresses here. There's 15 of them. I'm not going to read them over the air right now, but I will be reporting them and sending letters, um, or having Harry. Anybody have anything to say about this?
Yeah, I'd suggest that instead of letters, we go ahead and just do the phone call, um, annotate it. I can, you know, if you give me a list, I can do the phone calls. It'd be, uh, a lot quicker that way. And as long as it's recorded, you know, documented, it's just as good as a written warning.
Any, any type of notice would be, would be great. I, you know, we could just go ahead and ticket them for six days now if we wanted to, and that's 90 bucks a person for 15 things.
I just didn't see any reason in sending, you know, sending letters out. It's a lot of time.
And there's one other thing, uh, before I end, and, uh, that is, um, being consistent. We were talking about being consistent in all things. Um, we need to understand or decide if we're going to comply, if we're going to change our council meetings, all of them on federal holidays or none of them. Because right now we changed our council meeting for Martin Luther King, but we didn't change our council meeting for President's Day, which is today.
I don't think anybody even realized it.
Realized what?
That, that this fell on President's Day.
Oh, I did, but that's because my kid's not in school today, so.
Federal holiday, Mike, you know, and
Yeah, but I'm retired. I don't know.
Well, regardless, so that's all I'm saying. We need to be consistent. We either
I agree.
We either honor, honor all of the federal holidays or none of the federal holidays, but we can't pick and choose, be inconsistent.
I agree. I think, I think we just missed in the scheduling.
Uh, one more thing, just a heads up, Independence Day is on Sunday. The observation is on Monday. So that'll be another one.
I think we've already changed that one.
It's not, it's on the, it's on the schedule on our website that we're having a council meeting on the 5th of July.
We'll, we'll check that. I, I have, I have the schedule in front of me, Mayor. It's the 6th on our paper.
Okay, well, on the, on the paper that we, uh, I think we approved, but if you look at the calendar on the website, it's different. So we'll have to change that.
So we fix the borough calendar.
All right, we'll fix the borough calendar, but the bigger issue is, are we going to honor all federal holidays or just Martin Luther?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll do that for next year. We can't change our meeting for tonight, obviously.
No, I, I understand that. This is for the future. I'm just saying.
I think that's a good idea, Tom. I think that's a good idea.
Very much. That's the end of my report. Unless somebody has anything to say.
Okay, going back to your pedestrian accident and lighting, I'd like to refer that to the Safety Committee.
Randy had a question, Joanne.
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Uh, I want to go back to the, to the snow removal. I under, I understand what the mayor's talking about. I walked across it, uh, over the weekend. Uh, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time to send a phone call out because after tomorrow, you're going to be right back at it again. And I'm thinking that it would be better to judge it from this storm than the storm a week ago.
Well, the evidence is still there from the storm a week ago.
It is, but it's going to be, I'm, I'm, all I'm saying, it's not going to be there tomorrow. Part of it will be, but you're not going to know it because you're going to have new stuff on it.
Well, if we call them and say you, you've been out of compliance for the last seven days, let's not be out of compliance for this storm.
Yeah, but yeah, it's up to you guys.
Well, I think it's a safety issue.
It is.
Go ahead, Ann.
The sooner
The sooner, the sooner we contact the property owners, the sooner they can do something about it, and the fewer people who will be injured or put at risk. It's all, it's all I'm thinking.
And I have no problem with that, as long as we're not fining them, because I think they're.
No, we're just calling.
No, just letting them know.
We will be in the future.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor?
Well, I, you know, obviously, the lighting, which I like the idea of it going to safety, to the Safety Committee. Just to clarify, there was spotlights on those crosswalks, but because there was an additional accident, we upgraded the spotlight just for the time being. You know, we did what we could in-house, but I do agree, the Safety Committee should look at the general lighting in the downtown.
Well, I think particularly on the diamond, particularly.
Yes, particularly on the diamond.
Yeah, and we did talk about this at our last streets meeting on Thursday, one of our, I think, last topics, and I think the discussion there was looking at all the crosswalks to make sure that there's appropriate lighting for people walking across the street.
Get her done.
Okay. Anything else from there?
I'm not taking any more questions.
How about a comment?
You want John's plastic shovel?
I didn't know, I didn't catch that joke.
Many of us didn't, Tom.
It's a finance committee, it's an inside joke with the finance committee, sorry.
Yeah, John can't afford a decent shovel.
Okay, moving on to the next item, it's my report, and I only have one item, and it's regarding preemption. Last week, I attended a National Democratic Municipal Officials webinar on preemption. Mark, and I don't much know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, Perchuk, he's a lawyer and the director of PreemptionWatch.org, gave an hour-long presentation on states preempting local municipalities from controlling their local programs, zoning, and activities. The most common types of preemption vote that he talked about focused on firearms, plastics, nutrition, and health, limitations on requiring fire sprinklers in a community, anti-discrimination issues, paid days, smoking limits, and e-cigarette limits. Our most recent experiences here in Bellefonte with preemption have included limiting our zoning rules surrounding microcell towers and personal delivery devices. He talked about the need for communities, officials, business owners, residents, and the media working together to try and make sure that areas of local control do not preempted by the state. The editorial that I asked Ralph to place in the packet was co-authored, co-authored by Mr. Perchuk, as well as several other lawyers and planning officials from throughout the country. It outlines four strategic activities to combat and ultimately discourage the introduction of preemption to preserve local control. These include monitoring and anticipating potential preemption regulations. We often do this and see through both PML and the PSAB, as well as us monitoring legislate, possible legislations that we've heard, either from other states, or actually have been dropped into the bucket here in Pennsylvania. Second is engaging the grassroots. Third is unifying the allies. And fourth is utilizing our media advocacies. Basically, his bottom line was, you need to be proactive, working, it works better than being forced into reaction, which is what we've just had to do with the PDDs. And we're now going to have to, in the next couple of weeks, put some kind of resolution together to say how we're going to deal with the preemption regulations that have been put into place. We don't, it's just FYI, as Douglas said, we don't expect these PDDs to come here, but we'd rather be proactive than reactive, should they come down the pikes of the, the public and the potential vendors know where they can and cannot provide these PDDs in our town. Any questions? Did that say to my report? And it's your turn for Building and Property.
Building and Property, communities met, we spoke with a young bride-to-be who wants to make sure that her wedding guest, she's planning a wedding in Tallyrand, wants to make sure that her wedding guests do not have to pay for parking. I believe what we finally decided was that she may purchase courtesy parking placards that her guests will put on the dashboard of their vehicle. She will be paying $2.50 per hour for five hours. Is this correct?
No, it's $2.50 for the entire five hours.
Oh.
It's a, normally, it's a dollar an hour, where we make it at 50%,
Okay.
starting from, going from three to eight, which comes out to $2.50. And so that placards would be valid from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
I, I wrote this down wrong. Okay, yeah, that makes more sense. And, and with those, they will get a map that will show them places where they can park throughout the town and walk into Tallyrand, which I think is a terrific solution. And she seemed content with that. She will however have to speak with Parks about the COVID physical distancing and, and procedures in that regard.
You need to make a motion.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to, for the parking placards, and all of this contingent on the COVID procedures being followed. Yes?
Yes, okay. So we have a motion to provide half-price parking permits for the wedding guests for five hours from 3:00 to 8:00 PM on Friday, May 28th, for $2.50 per, per permit. And the rest of it will be referred to Parks and Rec for the COVID guidelines. And is making the motion, who's seconding that?
I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay. Walker and Prendergast. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. All, all opposed? So moved.
And, okay, the other thing that we discussed that's on the agenda here, I can't see what I'm, can't see what I wrote. Reworking, okay, there's a request to extend the deck over the mill race at the cafe on West High Street. And the, what we suggest to do is to rework the original agreement with somebody with the jet, with Jab Cow, to include new names of the new owners of the business, and the, and the measurements for the deck.
I like that idea from the.
So you're, you're making a motion to move ahead with an updated MOU between the borough and Cafe Buzz?
Right.
For the extension of the deck at, around the side and back of Cafe Buzz, pending review by Harb?
Yes.
Joanne, I, I thought that you wanted to see the modification to the agreement the committee did first, and then have that come back to the full council for approval, and then go from there. That, that's the.
Okay.
I thought, I thought that was a direction from the committee the other day.
Okay.
Myself, we'll revise the agreement, attach a drawing to it, get it out to the committee for review. The committee doesn't have any changes, we'll put it in the council packet for March 1st.
Okay, so we'll hold off on a motion. We haven't had a second, so we're good.
Okay, because that makes more sense that we actually have something, that Harb will actually have something to look at, correct?
Well, we will look at the MOU, and once we agree to the MOU, then they would have to go to Harb to get the final recommendations, come back for the approval.
Right.
That is correct. What, what council has to approve is providing the easement, the extension of an easement for the current owners.
Okay. Anything else, Ann?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, any questions for Building and Property? Seeing none? Move on to Finance and Government Performance.
Okay, hopefully you guys can hear me, my internet doesn't like anything except perfect weather, so now that it's starting to ice, I keep, you guys keep going in and out, but hopefully this works. We had a finance committee meeting on February 9th. Just the, the main thing that came out of that meeting is that the committee decided to hold off on the department meetings with the committee, we were going to do those quarterly, and after discussion, we felt like those weren't, really wouldn't be an efficient thing to do at this time, so we're going to revisit that next year. However, we will be meeting with the police department, I think, beginning in April, and then quarterly from there, so. That is it, all from the finance meeting. And then the second thing is the strategic management plan. We had a work session previous to the council meeting here, in which we looked at the updated plan, and we should be getting a revised plan from, from the, from Delta, thank you, and then we'll go from there.
Any questions?
Quick, what is that going to, do we expect an update from before the next meeting?
That was my understanding.
I, I got the.
That was mine too, I just checked.
By the end of the week, Mike.
Okay.
That's all I have, if there's any questions for me.
Okay. Seeing none? Parks and Rec, Melissa?
The next Park and Recreation meeting will be held on February 23rd at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
Anything else?
I have nothing further.
Okay, anything from Parks and Rec for anybody else? Okay.
Oh, I did have something for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Melissa, the people that are volunteering to do the waterfront are, they apparently aren't aware that they're not supposed to use salt over there by the, by the steps. They used a ton of it on the last snowstorm.
That, that wasn't, that was our, our crew, Mike. They, they, I was told that they put it on because the steps were in such bad shape. It's okay on the steps where we can't put it, is on the, it can't get on the caps, that's what gets, that's what the salt destroys.
Well, down there.
Thanks, Mike.
Anything else? Seeing nothing? John, Human Resources?
Yes, since we've already talked about nuisance codes, I would like to make the motion that we to hire Harry Brooks is our new nuisance code officer. He, Harry interviewed with I, Don, and Ralph today, and Harry was a prior nuisance code officer in Bellefonte, and brings a wealth of experience to the, the job. So I'm making a motion to, to hire Harry as our part-time nuisance code officer.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Clayton? Discussion? Did he say he would do the reports?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he was, yeah, he, he is a, he, his background was in doing safety studies for insurance companies.
Well-versed in reports.
Yes, everything we ask him for, he was like, oh, so you just want a tabulation of my status, tabulation? We said yes. He said, oh, that's no problem. So, yeah, it was, things will be fine, it appears.
Good.
So, and then on Wednesday.
Wait a minute, we haven't voted yet.
Okay, well, we already, Tom already announced it, he's starting tomorrow.
I noticed that.
Well, that's all we really, that's all, technically, that's all we really need, need is.
Yeah, it's a good or bad situation, you're done.
Okay, all, all in favor? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, now keep chattering.
Okay. I am informing the public, Joanne, I'm not chattering.
And that's, that is a matter of opinion.
Okay, on, on the, our next HR meeting, which we will be doing discussions and planning for the upcoming contracts negotiations with our, for Public Works employees, will be 4:00 PM on Wednesday, the 17th. And that's it for me, I am done chattering.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Seeing none? Safety? Randy?
I'd like to request a doodle invite for a meeting to discuss the crosswalk lighting in downtown Bellefonte. Other than that, so I have other reports later on in the agenda, but nothing clearly under a safety at this time.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none? Moving on to water and sanitation, Doug?
Y'all have the draft of the Borough Authority Meeting Minutes, nothing too exciting. And I'm going to let Ralph take the Amendment to Bulk Water Agreement, signed and returned to the authority.
I, I just mentioned that that was the next step, you know, the last meeting, council approved signing it, and Joanne, our council president stopped in to sign it. I also had the authority president or chair sign it, and I forwarded to our attorney in Harrisburg. So I'm waiting to hear if there's anything we need to do next, but he, he asked that I, you know, scan everything in, send it to him, so that's what I did.
That's sort of what I thought, so I appreciate you doing that. Also, Madam President, thanks for signing that on behalf of Borough Council.
No problem.
The, I think, yeah, Mr. Eaton prepared a nice report for the gravity flow that will, I've, I've read it carefully, John, and I'll pass that along to other members of the authority, and see where we go from there.
Just remember, the numbers are as good as the information that was provided me, with the assumptions.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, you know, 100 elbows, that makes pretty good sense. And, you know, depending on the barometric pressure, that altitude could change a foot or two.
Well, maybe, but when you're around Gina, you get used to a lot of elbows.
Okay, well, thank you, John, thanks for doing that. Thank you.
No problem, my pleasure.
Thanks. That completes my report.
Any questions? Seeing none? Streets? Deb?
Okay, in your packet is the proposed wording for an amendment to the Large Vehicle and RV Parking Ordinance, and I'd like a motion to approve this to go to advertising, to be advertised.
Are you making the motion, or?
I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, you, you make the motion.
All right, I'll make the. All right, I'll make the motion.
I will second it.
So we have a motion on the floor to advertise amendment to the large vehicle RV ordinance to grandfather in vehicles currently parked in violation of the ordinance that went into effect on January 1st, 2021. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? So moved? We'll put this out for advertising and then we'll have a vote at the next meeting.
Okay. And at Thursday's meeting, there was a presentation from Jim Carriello from Park Mobile. He was describing a parking app that can be downloaded onto customer smartphone so they can actually pay at the meter without using a credit card or throwing coins in. It's just a convenience for parking customers. There is a 35 cent per transaction fee for the convenience. One of the advantages is if you've signed up for a certain amount of time and you're out shopping, you will receive a notice on your phone that your meter is about to run out and you can re-up your time from your phone.
Is that that 35 cents?
Per transaction.
Is that going to the, to the parking customer or to us?
That goes directly to the app provider. There's no cost to the borough. Customers download the app the way they would download any other app. Or it does not affect our parking fees at all. The 35 cents goes to the the app seller.
There's a second vendor that will probably be coming in this week or maybe next week to give us a similar presentation. So this is not the only group we're looking at.
Right. This is just a single presentation to give us some ideas of what's out there.
The question I have is the do they have, do they have to tap into our system or something, or can't they just set up this payment system with us? Do they need our approval?
Um, are you asking, Mike, do they need our approval to create this program? Or are you asking, can they just come and do it willy-nilly? The answer to the second is no, they have to get approval of council to become the contracted vendor for the app within the borough. Which is why they're coming and talking to streets.
For your greater knowledge of this subject.
We're looking into it. And they would be putting stickers and signs all over all of the meters and the kiosks to let the public know that the app is available or can be used with our system. But it's something that's in the works.
Mike, Mike, it's it's used all over the country. There are pretty
I know. That's why I was wondering if it was, if they required our approval.
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, you can.
Okay. Yeah, anyhow, Mike, it's just one vendor we're taking a look at to to possibly be able to refresh your meter from your smartphone or or other phones. So.
I know I could do that when I was at visiting my daughter at Cal U, but I didn't know if that was is their system or they just had me put my my phone number in the kiosk and they notified me from whatever system they had. I don't know if we could incorporate something like that into our system into just programming.
Yeah, I think we're looking at different options.
We we would love to do that, Mike. Unfortunately, our kiosks don't, I mean, we we had hoped that they would offer that, but our kiosks do not. There are some kiosks out there that you can do that. Unfortunately, ours ours can't. So that's where the that's where the app would come into play.
Understood.
Ralph, are you trying to say something? You're muted.
Sorry, thank you. The meters on the street, you know, or not, you can't put the text, your phone number in, so.
I was talking about the lots, but.
Yes, I'm just, we're trying to find an app that would work for both.
Okay.
And have it available.
Understood.
Ralph?
John, go ahead. John and then Deb.
Is this an app that you would, you'd be using like Apple Pay or something like that? Where there's no credit card involved? You're purely doing this? Okay.
Yep, this is, this would be a touchless, so you don't have to touch the meter at all.
Correct. And your your information is stored in in your phone. Yeah, so the app uses that to pay Bellefonte for your meter time and they take out their charge off of your credit card information. So in in a nutshell, that's how it works.
Wait, is it actually less of a charge than what our credit card transaction fee is?
No.
No, it's
It's an addition too.
Yeah, it's fairly expensive.
Oh, is it? Okay, you answered the question. That's what I was asking. Is it more expensive than a than a credit card transaction?
I think so.
So, John, I think if concretely, we, if you were to use a credit card in the parking lot, you would pay a dollar. The credit card company gets part of that fee and we get the rest of it. This app would be in addition to that dollar an hour.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's what I was wondering exactly.
Okay.
Okay, we have one, one minor upgrade on a parking space on West High Street between My Bus Cafe and the intersection of Potter Street. The way the pavement is marked, there are the perpendicular marks for the parking space, but there's nothing that indicates where the pavement, where the roadway ends and the sidewalk starts. So the right, the streets committee just recommended painting a white edge line along the edge of that parking space so that people know that they need to park on the street and not over where the sidewalk is, because the meters are actually set up on the far side of the sidewalk. They're a little bit further away than normally you would have them. And I think there was an incident where somebody did actually park on the sidewalk next to the meter. So this will just delineate the street from the sidewalk. And that should be done, weather permitting, in the spring, probably when the other painting is done along Potter Street, along Bonfattas over to the Cagery. And just a couple of notes, the on-street permit parking areas that are being transitioned out from the red meters. The parking will be enforced from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, only, no evenings or weekends. And just a reminder that alternate side of the street regulations remain in place throughout the borough for street cleaning and snow and ice removal. And that the borough has the right to close any streets for repair, maintenance or community events. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions?
I have one. A resident asked me if there's any plans in the future to allow for multiple parking passes to be bought at the same time instead of paying the finance charge monthly.
Yes, I think you can, if you go into the Borough Office, you can purchase up to a year at a time if you're paying with cash or a check. If you do the credit card, if you do it with a credit card, it's only set up to be done a month at a time and you get socked with a 250 charge every time. So if you want to purchase multiple months at a time, you can get them directly through the Borough Office.
Great, thank you. That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. And there are, the newsletter that's, that's coming out even as we speak will have information about all of the parking changes in downtown including how to get the permits. So is there anything else?
Seeing none. Mike, energy and environmental conservation?
The only thing I have is an update.
When my, my dog says he has something back for streets.
I'm sorry, I missed a note on my report and for the water sanitation that that residents will now be receiving letters for their grass and brush container that they they were allotted last year. And that payment is due by March 31st, I think, was what what it is. And you need, they need to pay that because we're going to tabulate those who don't renew and then they will become available to folks who are requesting cans because we are now maxed out at the number of brush and grass cans we can collect in a day. So it's important for our residents to know to get that payment in by March 31st. And I, I'm going to say the borough isn't going to re-contact you if you receive the letter. That that's up to our manager if he wants to re-contact those folks before they get eliminated. But it's just a reminder to our residents, those, that fee, $15 per can, brush or grass, needs to be paid by March 31st. So I'm sorry, I forgot to include that in my report.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
The only thing I have is a, an update from the students on their project for Telegram stream. They've apparently downloaded some information into their modeling packages and they're working on getting that getting that into their design so they can finish up. So it'll be a while, I'm sure, but that's, that's where they're at. And that's all I have, as far as I know.
They they met with several members of the committee last week and gave us a visual update of what they've done and showed all the different points in the stream where they actually walked in the stream to find out the depths and all, so they could start graphing a three-dimensional crosscut of the streams in terms of their future plans.
Right, for their flow.
And they're going to be meeting with us, I think it's every other week now until they get the project done.
That was my understanding. I missed that meeting, but I, my understanding was that they were doing it every two weeks.
Any questions for Mike? Singnan? Move on to Office of Community Affairs. Ralph?
Sure. I just have some, basically a very brief report. Planning did have a meeting on February 8th. They're working on the short-term intermittent type rentals. A revised ordinance for that type of topic. And we hope to have it reviewed one more time by the Planning Commission and then it would be recommended for approval for council. So you, hopefully you'll be getting it, you know, within a few weeks or a month or so. On HARB, we did not have a HARB meeting on the 9th. As been mentioned this evening a couple of times, we're in the process of hiring the code person, which is now is the matter of making a phone call. So we hope to have that person on board very, very soon. So thank you very much for doing that. That's all I have under Office of Community Affairs.
Any questions for Ralph? Seeing none. Special Committee reports. I think both of these are Randy's. You'll need to unmute yourself.
It took me a while to get there. I'm gonna go a whole way across the screen. So I have, I have minutes from the Fire Executive Meeting of January 28th. I wasn't expecting it to be in the packet because I needed, I needed to come to me in a word, Ralph, if you could send that to me. Because I had to make some changes. You'll see there's some blanks in there. But if you have any questions on it, let me know.
Yeah, I I only had one and it says, I don't understand the oral comments in the minutes. What's supposed to come through council and and when?
This was the discussion on, I believe, apparatus. And the comment that I made to them was that anytime an apparatus is purchased, it comes through council for approval. And I think that's what that was about.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
The other report is the Center Region Council Government's Public Safety Meeting. That's just my notes that I sent out. And if you've looked at them, I had on there about writing some letters. One of those letters was for to write to our county and state officials to allow to upgrade or move the police and the fire department members to the level where they could get the COVID vaccine. Currently, they're like on the second tier, not the first tier. So we would like to get them moved up.
So, Randy, that's under new business and there's a related motion as well. So
Right, I saw that.
Motion until we get to both of those at the same time.
Yep. And then there was another I put in there concerning a letter to the same officials about helping some of the elderly out with getting in contact to be able to set up an appointment for a vaccine because if they don't have computer or computer, you know, internet, something like that, it's difficult for them to sign on. And then the day after I, that I sent that, I see that I got a note from Sean Kaufman, our Center Region Emergency Management Co- Coordinator, that on February, on February 12th, he was pleased to announce that the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health issued an order today requiring all vaccine distribution locations to provide phone access as well as web access for vaccine resignation, regist, reg, registration, trying to get it out. So that's good that that, that's already went through. So that's a letter we don't have to write now. So we can talk about the other ones then later on here. That's all.
Any questions? Anybody else have a special committee report? Seeing none. Ralph?
I'll keep, I'll keep it brief. I did put in a written report. I hopefully take a couple of minutes to look at it if you haven't already. I just referenced that I had my evaluation in January. Everything checked out. Anyway, and of course, I have a note about the Airport Authority and thank you again for the motion this evening. One thing I thought, maybe you have thought about it from time to time, is getting like an earth cam or webcam focused on High Street or maybe Cali Ram, but you know, at night, especially if the lights on, looking up the courthouse, that's, you know, of course, we think it's very, very beautiful. I would like to show that off and look into getting a camera like that established. I'm sorry?
You wouldn't be a bit biased, would you?
I may be. I may. Yes. I I jump ahead a little bit here and then I'll come back. There's, you know, I did suggest in my evaluation process about doing a retreat and that's been mentioned this evening. Other councils and staff nearby have done that. It's been successful. I think it's something we want to do at some point, as we, as I mentioned, when it's appropriate to do something, you know, and I think we we talked a couple of times about, even in the work session and the strategic management plan, some things have been on the table for a long time. And, you know, hopefully a session like that would help us focus and decide, well, step A is this, step B is this, and so on. But anyway, that's the purpose of those retreats. And then lastly, I did put in some financial charts, data on the borough, revenues primarily, you know, what we're, what we've collected looking back at a 10-year timeframe, 2010 to 2019. I looked at, you know, obviously I have that data, but also have our current assessed values. How we compare to the other municipalities in the county. Again, if you haven't already, take a look at it. I think there's some, you know, some, some difficulties that we're facing. And, you know, what can we do while we're strong and healthy to put things off, maybe redirect some things. There are some things I think we could do to maybe have us better, at a better fiscal position. If we work at it and focus on it, so. Anyway, take a look at it, I'm happy to answer any questions and looking for feedback, you know, I'm happy to tweak things as well.
Ralph, I have a question.
Sure.
On this webcam stuff, is this just safety related or is this? Or is this more of a community economic development sort of thing?
Economic development aesthetics, you know, if you just watch the news, almost any evening. They'll show many different squares, main streets in our. You know, in the news, 10 county viewing area, you'll see many examples. If you even Google Earth Cam, you'll see a bunch of them. But those types of things, I think, you know, maybe hopefully put some eyes on Bellefonte and maybe bring some people into town.
Okay, could we refer that to the Finance Committee for possible, you said you were going to get some numbers. For for that, because I know it's not in our budget, so it may have to wait, wait until 2022, but at least we'll, we'll know that it's on the radar.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Joanne, I think what Ralph might be referring to, if you, most of the time, like if you go to State College Borough. You'll see a webcam of Allen Street and College Avenue. You'll see one of Beaver Avenue and Allen Street.
Yeah.
It's just if you're in California, you're a hometown person of Bellefonte, what's going on in Bellefonte, you can tune into the webcam. That I think.
I I was thinking that's where he was going, but I wanted to make sure it was that and not a safety issue thing, because. Then I would have said to send it to safety, but since it's the economic development, I think it sounds like a good idea and we should send it to finance to see if it's feasible, financially feasible.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thanks Ralph.
Thank you, thanks everybody.
Well, I do want to comment that this is the first report we got from Ralph and it was nice to see him use the new stationery with the Bellefonte. Design on the top, you might want to explain it, Joanne, if some of our members don't know about it, but. That, Ralph, that report's nice, it's adequate, I appreciate you doing it.
Hey, we, we don't know how to switch the second page to a blank page yet.
Well, it'd be nice to keep the the watermark on there.
Yeah, we could do that, but there's a, there was a blank page that had a little darker color to it. It's supposed to be the second or third page without the letterhead type thing and so on, but we're not there yet.
It's okay, it's all a learning curve and it's, and it's, it's so much nicer than our old version. I'm I'm glad that we had the. Design Design come in, that's the name of the company, by the way, Design Design Incorporated, come in and makes these recommendations, because it gives us. A better feel of the community, for the public, what we're talking about is we had a. Design company come in and not only look at streets, wayfinding signs. But also looking at updating our correspondence for the borough so that we could have a, make a better presence to the community.
Can you share your screen, Joanne, so the community can see what you're looking at?
I, Ralph can do it, I don't have it, you want to quickly show it?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it up in this file to bring it up.
Let me see if I can find it real quick.
There's one, yeah, I could do that.
Hold on, I got it, hold on a second. Get up the top so you can see it.
I thought Doug just showed it.
He did. Okay. Well, when I go to my screen, when I go to my screen, I can't see it, I can't see you all, I can't see what the screen sharing is. There.
There's one for Doug.
So.
Maybe we'll try to highlight it at the next meeting.
Okay, moving forward, Joanne.
Forward, upward.
Okay. Moving on to old business. Ralph?
I'll just quickly go down the list here, did someone have a question? Okay, sorry. The middle race bridge discussion, something we brought up at a previous meeting. Because of the Delta discussion with the consultant of Delta Development, we bumped that to the March 1st work session. And, you know, the Streets Committee has been looking at the personal delivery devices in a resolution. I just want you to know, we're trying to develop that and locate a good example. So just, you know, it's on the radar. Borough website modifications, I may leave Don speak to this, some time ago, maybe even six months or so ago. Counsel had asked or was requested to add, you know, a little bit more information. On the elected officials primarily, you know, maybe a little bit of a bio or something like that. So Don, I believe Don is, has that ready to go, or you provide the information and we can put it on the website. Don, do you want to clarify that?
That's correct, Ralph, all we need to do is go back to. Blink 123 or, and then have them activate it and then we would just need the bios and photos. It will allow up to a photo and bio for any council member that wants to add more information about themselves on the website, so. I know some of, some council members do, some don't, that'd be, it'd be solely up to the individual council member.
So what we would need to make this officials a motion to approve this change for individual council members. To contribute what information they want about themselves to Ralph or Don for transmital to our rub designer, including your choice of photo.
Make that motion, Brackville.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Brackville and Clayton. Discussion. Seeing none. Just real quickly, so if, Don, if you could send out an email to everyone if we pass this motion, of the kinds of things that you would think might be helpful on the bio from others that you've seen. Then we can put our things together and send them to you.
Will do.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Next one Ralph asked me to take on. The, we've been working for about three years on a anti discrimination local human relations ordinance and commission. The concept is progressing, two weeks ago, I believe. The borough managers from Ferguson State College and Bellefonte met. And looked at what they hoping will be is the final version draft of the ordinance. They will be meeting with. The presidents of each of the three councils somewhere between March 3rd and 12th. To look at not only that, but a, an MOU to coordinate the, the program, should we all go forward with this? And then once that happens, we'll be bringing it to council for your review.
I would just add that each municipality will have to, you know, approve their own individual ordinance. Although we'll have a model from the other, Ferguson's kind of has the draft, but. We'll each have to have our own ordinance on our books when the time comes.
This is exactly like what we had with the CNET Consortium contract. We had to pass and had to be identical language across all three, once we get that and then we'd also pass this MOU. And then that MOU would then create a regional. Commission that would reduce the cost for everyone and according to what the state says and what Tom Fontaine says with their. 15 year experience with their human relations commission. It should not be a very expensive thing, particularly split up between the things, because there are not very many cases that come through at the local level.
I know, I know you're probably sitting there, you know, thinking what, what's the ins and outs and all of that. I think this would be a, a good work session topic, once we get, maybe we're, we're pretty much set on a MOU and ordinance. And talk about, you know, what we know about the State College. Relations, Human Relations Commission and well as the state's Human Relation Commission. Why there's discussion on, you know, doing something more at the local level and maybe see if we can answer some questions.
And I think we could probably get Tom. Or the Chair of the State College Human Relations Commission, as well as probably Carl Somerson, who's the liaison to the county. Who helped write many of these local ordinance around the state to come in for this work session. Questions? Okay, seeing none. Any other old business?
Oh, I have.
Okay, anybody else have any old business? Okay, then we will go on to new business. First thing is to set. Several dates for the rest of the year. First one is yard sale and riffraff. Ralph has given us two options, May 14th and 15th. With riff for the yard sale with a riffraff the week of 17th to 21st, or the following week, May 21st and 22nd for the yard sale. And 24th, 28th for riffraff.
My personal preference would be the latter.
Do you want to make that motion?
Can I make a suggestion, I'd just like to add the 28th is the Friday before Memorial Day. And typically, we have guys that, you know, they take that day off. And it usually takes everybody we have, I'm not saying not to do it that time, I'm just saying I think it'd be a hardship on us.
I was, that has come up in the past, Don, I was, I was thinking it was the following week, that was the, the trouble week, the day or the week of Memorial Day, but if you're telling me. You know, Friday, they're gone, that, that does create a hardship. With whoever's left trying to get Friday's. You know, route taken care of.
In that case, I changed my preference.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we have it on the former.
So. Borough Yard Sale on the 14th and 15th and Riffraff on the 17th to the 21st.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, Prendergast and Eaton. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, so moved. Second dates are Halloween Parade, need a motion for October 30th for the parade and trick or treating on the actual date of October 31st.
Works for me.
Sounds good.
I'll make the motion, Joanne, to approve Sunday, October 31st, 2021. For trick or treating. And do I need to include the Halloween Parade for Saturday, October 30th?
Yes.
2021.
Okay.
I don't see a time for the parade, is it necessary?
It's usually 6:00 PM.
Parade they usually have been doing in the afternoon, but once you get a little closer, we'll try to get all the details.
And do we need to do a COVID thing for this?
Probably make it conditional.
Okay, with. COVID conditional for parade. And that go to streets, I assume?
Well, I think we're approving the dates.
Right.
Right now. Usually, I don't think we usually have streets do anything other than make sure that we, they have.
No, what I'm saying, Doug, what I'm saying is because of COVID, we need to, and we don't know what it's going to be like in October, whether we will still have the restrictions going on or not. We may need to send it to either streets, which seems to be the most reasonable rather than parks, because it's down the road. It would go to streets for them to review for the COVID guidelines. Just in case, so, and I think the biggest part of that is the lineup area, because once you get out on the streets, they're, they're spread out, it's just when they're doing the gathering that might be the issue. So anyway, we have the motion, who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
Prendergast, thank you. So all in favor of these dates, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. So. Ralph and Don have a question, since this isn't until October, which is 10 months away, no, eight months away. Should we just hold off on streets until like June for them to review the guidelines?
I think so, because we'll, I mean, HBI, I believe is, or maybe it's the Rotary. You know, takes care of the parade, so once we get close to getting those details. Yes, maybe around mid summer, late summer, we can.
Okay.
Come back to this and make sure everybody's, what's, what's going on in, in our community and all of that.
Okay, so I'll put it down on my to do agenda for like late July.
Yeah.
Okay. The last one is the holiday season courtesy parking from Thanksgiving Day on Thursday, November 2nd, 2021 through New Year's Day on January 1st, 2022. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Prendergast.
Clayton and Prendergast. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Okay, now we go back to the COVID vaccine issues. Ralph and Randy, you've both brought this up, so. Give a short synopsis for the public and then we can make the two motions.
Well, right now, our central municipal workers, police, water, sewer, refuse workers. Are not on the top priority list, I think they're down a category or two, whether it's 1C or 1B, I'm not sure. But we think because their services are essential and vital. If you just look at what they do, we have people on call 24/7 to come out, make sure there's a water break or there's a pump that goes down. We get that restored ASAP, so water service is continual. Same thing with wastewater treatment, it's a 24/7, 365 business. We have, you saw in Sean's, our Chief Weaver's report, he had two police officers with COVID. We have a small department to start with, the sooner we have our people vaccinated, the better. We have refuse collection, which is also very much a health and safety issue, we, we're down personnel to start with. If our main core services cannot be provided because people are out sick, we are in trouble. You know, it wouldn't take very long for very serious pollution, water, healthy water issues to, to come to play. And removal of solid waste garbage, you know, is a big safety, health issue. I could go on and on, but I just want, you know, obviously, we're, we're very concerned about. Society and getting back to normal and everything, we want to see that happen. But the sooner our essential workers get vaccinated, I think it'll be better for everybody, we can continue these core services.
I'm surprised they're not already classified as frontline workers.
I, I am surprised too, but for some reason, you know, they're just not near the top of the list.
So we would need a motion to send letters to. Our state senator, our. our state senator, our state representative and the governor requesting the prior, prioritizing all municipal essential workers in waste, wastewater, streets, refuse and water management.
And police.
Can we, can we do it on police?
That's the second one. That's the second one. Hold on.
Can we make it one?
That's what I was thinking, just make it one.
Can we make it just one?
It's, it's up to you guys.
The only reason I'm saying make it two is because the second, the fire and police are being done coordinated throughout the rest of the state. I think we would muddy the waters if we.
Good one, Joanne.
That's the only reason I'm saying two motions.
Then let's just do it in two motions.
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we prioritize the essential work, the municipal's employees as essential workers.
Okay, Pendergast, who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
Brackville? Discussion?
I, I don't know. I, I'm, what you're doing is fine, but I really think what you need to do is to get with a provider that will help you actually get your people vaccinated. We got some local groups in town or in the area that seem to be quite good about, you know, getting people vaccinated. And then we have some other groups that it's pretty much if you're there for 15 minutes at the exact right time when the website opens, you can get a vaccine. So it, it may be what we need to do is coordinate with a better provider so that our people can actually get vaccinated.
They still have to be in the group that's authorized to get vaccines.
And, and, and you could argue that almost any of our, of our police, firemen would fall into the same category as EMS workers, which are
Which is what we're doing with the second motion.
Right.
But that's what you're doing, but you still got to get them within the vaccine system such that they can get vaccinated. And that's going to be the problem. You can get them categorized. But if they don't have somebody that's going to be able to help them get into the system and get scheduled, then you're going to have a problem.
Randy?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, but I don't think we're talking about that. We're talking about getting them to this, to the, to the level where they can make a reservation to get vaccine. Right now, they can't, they can't even get on a list. So we need to, we need to get over that hurdle first. And then whoever, whoever is giving out the shots and, and, you know, Nittany, Nittany Medical Center is starting to get, you know, going to be receiving more vaccines. So there's going to be more available here, hopefully in a few weeks. Hopefully next month, there's even more available. And so as those are happening, these lists are going to be created and people can get on. There are some people sitting out there maybe three, four weeks who have, who have a vaccine scheduled, but they're three, four weeks out. And that's the way it works. And, you know, I'm with, I'm with Mount Nittany, but I went through Geisinger. And so, you know, they're, they're not drawing lines as to do you qualify or don't you. It's, you know, I'm, I'm at the age where I'm able to do it and we signed up. So that hasn't been an issue, but the issue is some people weren't able to sign up because of age and, and what they, what they have, what tools they have to work with. And others are, you know, firefighters, I think some of those, you know, if somebody has a medical condition, they can sign up, no matter what age they are. But we need to, you know, these are our first responders. Our police are usually the first ones to a medical incident. And, and as well as our fire, fire crew who go out and do carry, you know, carry the people out who are ill and can't get out themselves. So this is something that we need to prioritize is to get them res, you know, into the next level, the, the top level.
Look, no, no one's arguing this. I think all we have to do is, we're just making a recommendation to send the letter to
Correct.
to the people in charge to consider these categories. And I think it's a wise thing to do in two motions because if you lump everybody together, then it gets muddied up by saying, well, we, we want the police to get theirs, but we don't want these other guys to get it. So we're not going to pass this. So yes, Pat, let's go. Put these guys on the front line and do it in two motions.
So any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? So moved. Okay, now we need the second motion for police and fire.
I'll make the motion. Okay, good.
That doesn't matter, but yeah.
I'll second it.
And this one also goes to the same group of people as well as the Department of Health because it's already on their radar. So there's an additional person for this one.
Sounds good.
Pendergast made the motion and Brackville seconded it.
Move so fast, Johnny.
Okay, any discussion?
Just reading the Geisinger, I'm reading the Geisinger website definition of Phase 1A versus what's on Mount Nittany. The one's a lot more general than the other. To say on 1A on Geisinger and walk in and get vaccinated, whereas not at Mount Nittany.
We'll go to Geisinger.
That's right. I think that's why Randy's smiling.
Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Do you have anything else, Randy? I mean, Ralph from new business?
I have nothing more this evening.
Randy, you had something.
Yes, I did. With the May primary coming up, people who are interested in getting their names on, on the May ballot are still required to do door to door. And I wanted to put it out there just for the residents, so they're in the, in the same loop as the folks that are going to have to be coming knocking at their door. That that's their purpose is to hopefully get your support by signing their petition. And so that's, that's basically what I, what I'd like to do is have get this, hopefully they see this or hopefully we could put it on the Bellefonte website. If people go there, they could see it as well. Maybe put a blurb in the express that, you know, there'll be people out from February 16th, which is tomorrow, which might not be the best day, but that's the day it starts. And it goes to March 9th, so. I, I just think that there could be some people out there uncomfortable with people coming to their door. You know, I think we went through the same thing when they, we were doing the census, so I think this would be helpful for everybody.
So the offices that are open are judges of election, your poll workers, your county judges, which I don't think we have any, jury commissioner, and superior, supreme and Commonwealth Court judges. And so some people may be bringing more than one petition to sign, just so be aware. And as I understand, they're going to try to bring you, they will do a social distance masked and everything else that they need to do. So, any questions? Seeing none. We will be holding a executive session regarding personnel and real estate immediately following this meeting. Is there any public comments from anyone? Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Brackville and Pendergast. You're very popular this evening, guys.
Want to move this thing along?
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned at 9:33 PM.
I assume we're using the same link for the
Yes, we just stand on till we get.
Clean it up.